The next item on the superintendent's report is the approval of conceptual design for Boyer Town Senior High Expansion. This time I'd like to invite Mr. Klop and Mr. Hartman to come forward and share with the community and the board a brief summary presentation this evening. I think it might be easier to see if we did, if that's acceptable, everybody. Thank you very much. It's almost anticlimactic after all the wonderful big events in a county. A real milestone to talk about high school, but this too is a big event, and I think it's worthy of our attention tonight. What we're concluding tonight is a very, very briefly hope presentation of a summary of probably, oh gosh, eight weeks worth of meetings and consultations and work, just spilled down into just a minute, can say fifteen-minute presentation. And what we're talking about here is the conceptual planning phase. That part of a project where you just kind of really define what it's going to be, what it's going to cost, and what kind of schedule you're going to put it together with. And that was what we were tasked with the last eight weeks of the meeting. First of all, as an end-to-end project, there's a lot of site issues that have to be resolved, especially in suburban environment. What we were tasked with was taking the most, getting the most that we could out of a $55 million budget. So many of you have probably seen other sketches over the years of previous weeks, but what we've elected to do here is concentrate our efforts along Monroe Street. Four or five key issues come up. One is the connection of Monroe Street out to Montgomery Avenue. It gives the school flexibility for traffic laws still to be worked out. It would be our goal to have the school own it, maintain it, and gate it so that it can be controlled for the time of days in the athletic fields. The buses are always exciting. I was, I don't know if you said fortunate or excited to be there when the bus is released today. If you haven't tried it, it's exciting, I'll tell you that. And we have had long discussions with the transportation department. They will continue. We are reconfiguring all those spaces of hoops and loops and shoelace turns and things out front, so we get one long bus loop and actually will hold all the buses we need, including growth, including the bringing in ninth graders, into one continuous bus loop with as many as we can send out of Montgomery to take the traffic out of Boyer Town with the option to turn and come back into town. We are reworking parking areas to make more efficient parking and all-weather parking, and we will be putting in a sidewalk fence retaining area along Keel Alley because many, many students walk there and are concerned about their safety. That's kind of a brief oversight as to what we're going to be doing. We go to the next slide. Again, we've had many, many discussions, but to briefly bring you through what we're doing. We are adding 21,000 square feet of new construction. That's noted in the blue. And by putting those pieces in there, we're able to reconfigure by moving things around those portions in the magenta or the pink. And as you see, that leaves a great deal of the building in the green. These represent levels of construction, levels of activity that we're going to be doing. Without going into great detail, it's a very short time tonight, briefly. We will be using the historic building in Boyer Town, maintaining it, the borough's thrill that we're using it, and I think we are too because it's a wonderful structure. It will become the Ninth Grade Academy. So the ninth graders, which are currently in east and currently in west, will now reside in this building, which is wonderful. It gives them a little bit of autonomy, but it also allows us to inject them into the system. Most of the things that they would need are in these pink areas and along the front of the building, so that we have a nice way to kind of integrate them into the older structure. We've had many, many meetings on this. For those of you who are really interested, there'll be many, many more, and we can get into details. But I think the point is, we've isolated this goal, and now John Hartman is going to tell us about the cost of these things and what is our intent to do in this project.
Thank you, Jay. As Jay pointed out, you can see there are three basic colors on this, three basic colors on our chart, and we broke those levels, those colors down. They create levels of construction activity that's going to take place, the amount of construction on the site. Next slide. This will be the second floor, reflecting same thing, the amount of work being done on the second floor and the various levels of construction. There's a level one, which is white areas. You can see there's very few of those. There's a level two, which is a green area, and a magenta, which is level three, and then the blue. And on the first floor, there were some blue areas there. Those are new additions, actually new construction.
Capacity. What are we doing with students? We have, the board has that belief in their place or not? They do. And we have four of the people in the audience. If we just handle that, okay? Okay, what we're passing out, I'm so sorry, I forgot the important part. The capacity study. It's very complicated, but I want to give you the 5,000-foot kind of view of it. We have analyzed the capacity of this proposed renovation, and basically what it allows you to do when we get done is shown on the left of the three pages. Page three at the bottom. If we don't have an overview, it's going to be too hard to read. You currently have a capacity in this school, a usable capacity of 1,862. By doing the changes that we are proposing, you will get a capacity of 2,670, which means after we move 600 students out of east and west, we will have a little over 200 student growth capacity. How we get that in a nutshell? Instead of building a lot of classrooms, we build 15 small group rooms, because many of the classrooms in the school now are getting eight to 10 student tutoring, you know, at least one period a day and sometimes more. If we take the students out of those big classrooms and tutor them in small group rooms, which are much less expensive to construct, take up a lot less real estate, we are able to use the rooms more efficiently, and therefore, a school which you really like, and it's out of a two-room street like this, we are getting better efficiency out of that building. We are using it more classrooms a day. We are going more periods a day. We will use the school on the eight-period day, we will use it seven of the eight, is that doing that right? Is it eight-period day? Eight-period day, we use it seven on the eight instead of the six on the eight, that it averages now. We put to, what we did, and we're going to stop, you know, you'll take this home, you'll pour over it, have a lot of fun with it. Tracking this is murder, right? Because classrooms change names, they change use. It's all on this piece of paper, so we wouldn't lose it nor mislead anybody. There's no smoke and mues here, but it takes a lot of hard, a lot of hard thinking. It will require a different teaching and education than you've been doing. I think that's probably exciting. It should be kind of fun. It doesn't give every teacher a classroom all the time, but it always gives a teacher a very quality place to teach. So I'm back on script, and now John gets to take a look at the slides.
Thanks, Jay. As you see, this is a broad stroke summary of a ten-page document that we created that really outlines the entire scope of work that the architect was designing to and that we are pricing out to come to a $55 million budget, building budget price, building budget estimate, based on not pursuing the lead for the initial base estimate. You see, what's a common thread across all the phases of this work, the entire building, including the Ninth Grade Academy, is level, all levels. What we're doing with all the levels is we're going to be replacing the mechanical system throughout with new boilers, new water heaters, new classroom unit metalators throughout, making it much more efficient, much more comfortable teaching and learning. The other common thread throughout is going to be there's going to be new roof, then ready, new insulation, new and additional roof frames to make the building extremely watertight. The third common thread is we're going to replace all the communications, the security, and the alarm systems, as well as a full fire protection sprinkler, the full fire protection system, the sprinkler system throughout the entire facility. Level one, you can see, that's going to be the least amount of work being done, least amount of general construction work to be done. That area is going to be mostly mechanical systems and mechanical rooms, boiler rooms, storage rooms, very little general construction work, very little finishes, it's all basically just mechanical work for HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Level two is the prominent, the green areas that I showed you before, and that is the majority of the building, approximately 212,000 square feet of the building. That's general classroom space. What we're doing there is the building has been maintained through the years by the school keeps facility group. It's in superb condition. The infrastructure needs to be updated. It's aged. What that means that all the classrooms, most of the classrooms that are in the green area are all going to be remaining the way they are. We'll do, replace the ceilings throughout because that's going to be driven by replacing, by installing sprinkler systems, replacing the piping above the ceiling with new mechanical systems. Lighting will remain, except in the corridors, we're moving, replacing all the lighting in the corridors, because that we just cannot keep in place where all the plumbing, main runs of the piping are going to be run through the corridors and into the classrooms. You'll see there, we also going to replay, patch and repair flooring, extend a painting in the rooms is going to be strictly patch and repair. We're going to replace the library floor, the library carpet, that'll be replaced throughout. And we're going to, we're going to update some of the selective food service equipment that's past its prime and just needs to be updated. Level three now is where the crux of work is going to be taking place. That is the magenta areas on the floor planes that we showed. That mean, those areas are going to have pretty much a total reconfiguration and renovation. Those areas will look brand-new when they're done. You'll, you probably won't even recognize them. The spaces will be reconfigured to work with the new educational concept and the academy concepts. We're going to provide new finishes throughout, we'll provide new casework throughout, new chemistry lab casework. We'll have a new scatter-type cafeteria serving that'll replace the old standing-line serving area, which takes, I guess, now, it takes about 15 minutes per student to get through. With the new scatter type, it reduces that down to eight to 10 minutes per student, which means more students can sit, have a longer lunch period as far as eating is concerned, in a much more efficient system. We're going to be replacing new plumbing fixtures in the new, in the proposed new toilet rooms for these areas, and we're also going to replace the new lighting throughout all those classrooms, get all the lighting, all the areas within that range. This is the cost estimate, a budget estimate of our $55 million and how we achieve that goal. You can see up in these areas is a breakdown from new construction, renovation, the 19, what we call the Ninth Grade Academy, or the old building, 1930s building, roofing, $4.1 million to re-roof. It's a lot of square footage up there. We're going to be talking about 330,000 square feet total, new and existing, of roofing. Food service equipment, we're also have site costs, including the Monroe Street extension out to Montgomery Avenue, soft costs and contingencies. That gives us $55 million budget right on the nose. Now, I want to just address the fact that to reach that $55 million budget, we had to reduce the contingency from our earlier $2 million contingency down to approximately $1.2 million in contingency. It's not a lot of money at this stage of the project, but we hit the $55 million goal, and we feel it can be done. Now, the next slide you see here is if the board chooses to pursue the lead goal. These are additional costs that we're showing to achieve the lead goal. By achieving the lead goal, you qualify for $850,000 in additional reimbursement, PDE, and you also will be awarded a $2 million ACE grant, which comes to obviously $2.85 million. However, the price to achieve the lead goal comes to $3.293 million. Subtract the $2.85 million from that, it leaves us approximately $444,000 of costs. That means to get $3.3 million of work, you're only paying out $444,000. That's quite a bargain. What makes that even better is your yearly payback, your yearly savings and operational costs comes to about $50,000. That's achieved by replacing all the toilet fixtures with water-saving toilet fixtures. That comes to about $26,000 in yearly water and sewage savings. By replacing the lighting system throughout the whole building, more efficient light, less heat they generate, you're actually saving approximately $15,000 in electric utility bills per year. There's also an additional $10,000 in savings associated with a more efficient mechanical system that we're putting in, reduce air conditioning costs due to less heat being given off by the lighting system. The total savings comes to $50,000, approximately $50,000 per year. That means that for, that $3.3 million of extra construction that you're only costing you $444,000 will be paid off in eight to 10 years' time. That's quite a bargain. The only stipulation with that is, is when we receive the ACE grant. ACE grant was based on a geothermal system to achieve goal. We just have to evaluate the criteria for the ACE grant, because our mechanical system is not based on a geothermal system. It's based on a conventional, high-efficiency heat pump system. The geothermal system would cost an additional $1.5 million, where now you can see, add additional $1.5 to that figure, it doesn't become a very viable option. Just to point out where we have come so far in a relatively short time, and also how much money we feel that we've saved in this overall project. The original feasibility study, just the existing building improvements only, the estimate cost for that was $32 million. That didn't include additions, it didn't include academies, it didn't include relocating the ninth grade students, it didn't include site improvements, security upgrades, or improved room utilization. Our current project, the total building cost, because building, comes to $47 million. So comparing apples to apples in the cost. However, what you see as incurred and included is the complete project. That includes building site and educational improvements, 21,000 square foot of additions, includes the five academies for the 21st century teaching environment, relocation of the 600 ninth grade students to the new ninth grade academy, improved bus and vehicle access, which includes site safety. We've improved the security of the building, secure entrances and other security modifications, and we've also added 15 new collaboration spaces. All that for $47 million. There's about a $15 million spread here, but we get the complete project for that amount. This covers very little. We're very proud of that. Just to finish up, just want to make the board aware that your action tonight is not approving this building to go into construction. You're just approving the budget and the conceptual design phase and approving us to move forward, authorizing us and the team to move forward to schematic design. You can see here by this chart that after tonight, there are another five more, five other pinch points, we'll call them, or timelines, where approvals are required at each phase of the game. Schematic of proof design, design development, then we'll go into construction documents, proof plan, PNF, project bids, proof to send out for bidding, and once the bids are received, the board once again has to approve to accept the bids and move on to construction. We figure there's approximately a nine-month period of time before we've actually received the bids sometime in October, and we're planning on the other construction activity to take place between two and a half to three years to finish up with all the phases. Building will be totally occupied during this time, just have to phase and shift students and staff around for the various renovations.
There's $31 million there for existing building, or $47 million for what do we call, proposal? But in the $31 million, we did not, in the $31 million, we did not relieve any of the elementary schools, but in the $47 million, we are moving, relieving the tension or congestion at the elementary school. So there's a, something was not, yeah, it's in there, but I'm afraid the point might be missed.
It was, it should have stressed probably a little bit more. That's correct. We are moving the ninth grade students, the 600 ninth grade students up into the high school, the ninth grade set, which as you said, will allow for more, alleviate some of the, some of the stress on the elementary schools by moving students up into the middle school. Yes?
Mr. Eskin.
Yeah, I heard saying that there will be teachers that will not have classrooms. I'm curious to see how that is.
We'll do our best. The conceptual stage is kind of the very beginning, and we had a very detailed construction with the teachers this afternoon, and with Dr. Cooper kind of weighing in on that. It may be, it's still to be developed, and again, since everybody is circling the president writing like crazy, we don't have a hard number on that. It's not significant, and there will be accommodations made. We're pushing toward a collegiate model where if you're in a college, other professors go into an office somewhere and then shares the classrooms. It was stressed by Dr. Cooper that we're not having people move multiple times or into multiple rooms, so it's not a total upheaval where you carry your worldly goods around every day and have to nomad your way around the campus. But a direct answer to your question is, perhaps, I think the man was maybe two per, maybe two per department total, still to be worked out, and they may actually be in better shape than the people that have a classroom by the time of our time. So our goal here is to make sure that the teachers have the facilities they need, that the students get the education they want, and that we are not compromising that by the process that we're proposing.
So what I heard you say, Jay, is some of this stuff could be worked out. Have I not found that that teachers will not have classrooms?
It can be worked out, but it's quite certain that with the number of classrooms we have and the utilization, you're not here to see the utilization table, you will be given one when you're able to get back. It certainly is, we cannot say that every teacher will always have a classroom, as it's the case in any higher institution, learning, college or university. It's, that is the case in all of them. I gave the example to the, to the teachers, you're on the continuum. In elementary school, you're always in the classroom, you're always, and it's yours. When you go to college, the professors move around and nobody has a classroom. We're going to be between that on the upper end, where on that continuum, where the majority of people will get a classroom, but not everybody unnecessarily. It cannot be worked out, I do not want to mislead you. It cannot be worked out for $55 million that everyone always gets a classroom, and I'm not sure that's good use of resources, probably.
Did you say that on the paper we got total capacity existing was 2,482 students? Is that correct?
At page three at the bottom, it is 1,862. You'll see it's total.
That's a subtotal for the 2,482.
The 2,482 is before the factors are applied. You always apply the utilization factors of common classrooms of getting occupied.
So right now, we only can occupy 1,862 students?
That's, which is more than you have, by the way. Yeah, that's about right.
And what's the capacity of the school now?
The capacity, the school now is 1,862. That column shows which is.
How many students do we have in this?
Oh, I'm sorry. 16?
1659.
1659, I told by Dr. Cooper.
And when you hit that, we're going to have 267.
That includes the ninth grade academy, so that's 600 ninth graders. That gives us approximately 208 or so growth, and still these classrooms empty at least one period a day.
So it was 200 growth, which is not what we have now. It's confusing. And we're.
I know, it's very complicated. I guess the logic is short of it. We are going to bring all the sixth graders in, all the ninth graders into the school.
I took that out of the equation. So maybe we're adding 200 students in the other part of the school.
That's correct. You're allowing for 200 students or 208 students growth. That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, which we would have room for now?
You're pretty close to that.
Right.
Yeah, you're pretty close to that.
Okay, the other question ahead is, we're adding more rooms for guidance counselors at conference rooms, a weight room and all that, and we're decreasing the classroom, classrooms.
No, I think actually what's happening here is they're just shifting from one area to the other, we follow through. We're trying to, what used to be in one area becomes in the other. The rooms should be pretty well neutral down there. Could you give me an example?
Example is, special ed, I know I wasn't exactly, I was going to give you that. We had 14 existing rooms, and now we're going down to 11. Right, because special ed population is increasing.
Right, and what we're going to be doing with that, we're going to be teaching them in those rooms which are better, eight to, eight to 12, and using some of those, also remains to be more and all that was done, but yeah, that's how that's getting taken care of. You, the concept here is classrooms that currently are holding, especially in a lot of those that are holding the eight to 10 to 12 kids, will be emptied by printing in a small room and a room to be taught there, and that frees up the other bigger classroom. That's the goal. Right sizing the classroom to the education.
Okay, because I can't find any of those in that stuff real quick.
Well, they're, they're general classroom. They could, it'll be on the first sheet, it's called, the core classrooms, that gives her.
Okay, I have this slide, okay.
And you'll see, my gosh, we lost a bunch. We did. We moved them, we repurposed them, and ultimately we come out ahead of the game because we changed, instead of building classrooms, like the last scheme, we build small group collaborative spaces, much cheaper, much smaller, and you actually increase your capacity because you take students out of a big classroom, they're kind of underutilizing it, and put them in there and then use those other classrooms more fully.
So the teacher collaboration areas for the academy, is that a stop for the kids, students?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That, the collaboration spaces are for those specialties where we're having functions in a major classroom that are only holding eight to 12 kids. Whatever they might be, they get shifted out of the big classroom, and that big classroom is not available for core teaching.
So that's different than the small group first?
I think they're probably called the same on here, and we just a little PD turn it on. Small group is the same, collaboration is small group. They're, they're all for students. Anything that's on there that talks about this, this first page, this is all teaching, these are all educational spaces, anything on the first page. And what we're showing you, what you have existing and what you're going to have proposed. And then we use some capacities for them.
Okay, one other question. Why is it, at least, we're looking at my friend, and the literature I read was, oh, you shouldn't have the library, especially if it's big use by the community, at a dam, so they don't have to walk through that hole. Well, why do we have those enough?
I think somebody else put it there, but if we want to go back, I'll answer that. We're actually, we're going to do the other. Since we can't move the locker, we're going to move the front door. So why? we're going to move the front door, so watch this. Okay, the library, this is my grand library down the way. There's a library, we are now making a new front public entrance, which as you noticed is right where the library is. The library is an expensive space to move, it's in pretty good shape, we're going to leave it. But you are right, we moved the front door much closer to it. Again.
So there's little squares there, they are going to front and go towards the library.
That is the library.
There's three little squares in the front, is that classrooms or what is that?
No, again, we, again...
Right there.
Right, well, we had a blow up, I didn't bring it to try to shorten the production here. As we discussed in the facilities committee meeting, the first box on there is a secure vestibule, we've touched that with a pointer. Okay, that is a secure vestibule, which is our primary function. You put that in the center of the building, it's locked as soon as the buses leave. When somebody comes to the front door, they're visually noticed and they are buzzed into that, into that pink box, if you know. They can't get out of it unless they're buzzed in and into the administrative offices. They have been moved from down around that banana-shaped curve to the middle of the building. So we're putting the administrators near the middle of the building, we're putting the entrance in the middle of the building, and coincidentally, if you want to use the library and all powers, we're putting that very near the middle of the building too. In a light manner, since you got me going. The gym that's on the end, the big blue thing, all the park, it's kind of down in that park, we're making new athletic entrance, we're saying, hey, when you come at night for athletics, if you show the athletic entrance there, there it is, right there. We're promoting an entry on that end, so we're trying to move the entrance ways to where they'll do the most good. Moving the library is a pretty expensive deal, and actually, educationally, it's not a bad spot for education, they said you should put your media center near the center of the students, you're pretty good, so we did the other, we moved the public library.
One last question, when are we going to see the traffic study, you still haven't seen that?
I'm sorry, we have pieces of it, and matter of fact, we're pent up looking for it too, by the way, so you've got good company. We have been consulting back and forth, and we will certainly make sure you get it. Coburn Dale Township is looking to see it. For those of you who want a nice night out, okay, November 21st, we will be in front of Coburn Dale Township people, giving them a big detailed overview of this, the one we gave to the facilities committee a couple days ago. So you're welcome to come, they're looking, they're looking for a traffic study. We're trying to find, it preceded us, we have some of it, it's going to be, it's going to need to be refined, and we're doing that, Coburn Dale says, hey, not so fast, let us influence what you count. So we might have to recount some stuff, it's going to have to be adjusted for that. It will happen, you will get a copy, and it'll be a big topic, we're on the board here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for these staff? Yes, Mrs. Yusavich.
I just have a comment, but I don't think we have a motion yet, is that correct?
Oh. We need to make motion.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approves the conceptual design plans for the Boyertown Area Senior High Edition and renovation project as presented, and furthermore acknowledges the projected conceptual design budget of $55 million. Approval by the owners shall be deemed to be approval of the concept, though not the means, techniques, or particular material recommended by the architect. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes the architect to proceed with the schematic design phase of the project and directs the architect to prepare schematic design documents for the board's approval consistent with the approved budget estimate and conceptual design plans.
Mrs. Yusavich moves. Mr. Crossley second. Mrs. Yusavich, you have a comment?
I wanted to thank the administration, KTB, for getting us to this point that's not so straight back to where we are today. I think that now we are focused on our frugal renovations and only two new spaces, which is much different than what we were looking at before. We're now looking at what the needs are, and we're focused on just the needs. We're addressing the growth in the most cost-effective manner that we could find. We're addressing the academic needs through the smaller community communities achieved through the academies. We're preserving the historic structure. We are improving security. We're also addressing academic needs through bringing the ninth grade to the high school and supporting the development of our 21st century skills for our Boyertown comprehensive or strategic plan. So I am in full support of this tonight, but I do want to just comment on some of the areas where I feel uncomfortable, where we still need work. I'm not very comfortable with that, the single ply roof is what is one of the reasons we're getting down to the $55 million, and that we would have, I understand, will have an alternate bid for the buildup roof. I have taken note that we will get a cost analysis provided to the board to look at before we go to bid. And also not very comfortable that we reduced the contingency to meet the $55 million target, which was already low, as I understand by current standards. And I recognize that it increases the risk of staying on budget, and we all have to accept that risk if we're voting for that tonight. And today at the design team meeting, I did hear concerns from some of the teachers about this collegiate-like approach and that some teachers may have to move from class to class, but I understand that this will be something that will be worked through with them during the next phase of the project. So I have confidence that those issues will be addressed. Thank you.
Mrs. Harper.
I think it's important that we remember the history of this project. It was originally began in January of 2012. And at that time, an architect was selected, and in February, a feasibility study was done for the entire district, including new grade configuration at high school. An Act 34 hearing was held in April of 2013. And Plan Con phases A through E were suspended. During this time period, the board heard from the community loud and clear about preserving the 1920-1934 high school building. In August 2013, the board elected to slow the process on the plan that was currently being considered. In September of this year, all plans were scrapped, and a new plan was developed to include the 1920-1934 building. We are now, once again, clear back where we were once before, at the very beginning in the design concept stage of the project. The budget was agreed to for the project was $55 million, and we must remember that $37 million of the $55 million is to bring the current buildings up to code, ADA compliant, update heating and electrical systems, a new roof or re-roofing of the other buildings, upgrade food service equipment. The additional new space or construction adds $5 million to the project. To increase our capacity at the high school for $5 million sounds very practical to me. We're being asked to approve the conceptual design for our high school buildings. The last time we renovated our avenue, any space to the high school was in 1992. That's 21 years ago. The state has placed a moratorium on construction projects. It would not be prudent not to move forward with this project. The next time we would be able to apply would be if and when the moratorium was lifted by the state. We're investing in the future of our buildings, which will house and support our students and their education for the next 20 years. I will be voting in favor of this.
Mrs. Harper. Seeing that, we'll vote on the recommendation to approve that rejected conceptual design which would cost $55 million.
Mrs. Yusavich?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin, yes. Mr. Crossley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dero.
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Seven?
Yes.
Seven and one, motion passes. The next item on superintendent's budget is BURT. Superintendent's report is the conditional authorization to pursue gold lead design for Boyertown Senior High Expansion. The facilities committee has reviewed the lead requirements in the design of Boyertown Area Senior High School Addition and Renovation Project. Based on the information provided by the design professionals, the committee has recommended that the school board consider and approve pursuing the lead goal for the project. Is the recommendation of administration and the board of school directors conditionally approve the pursuit, approve the pursuit of lead goal designation for Boyertown Area Senior High Addition and Renovation Project if the following conditions are realized. The district will be awarded the ACE grant as submitted in the amount of $2 million, and the grant award is not contingent on the district utilizing geothermal heat pumps as the building's primary HVAC system. If these conditions are not met, the district will not seek lead designation for the building project, and the budget will revert back to the current project budget of $55 million.
Dr. Crispin, he moves. Mr. Crossley second. Questions or comments about renovation? Yes, Mr. Crossley.
I will be voting for this because we need some time for the state to act, and because it's a conditional approval here, it doesn't mean we will be going down the road blindly. We will find out what happens down the road and make another decision sometime later about going with this project. So I'll look with it, keep it active, keep it alive, but I will not promise that, we'll continue to vote for it.
Mrs. Dero. I realize it is good for the project, but if we insist on doing that until it's needed, numbers don't show it, this would be a very smart move to make, to do this side over and on that. Mrs. Yusavich.
Yeah, to me, just our responsibility to the environment is extremely important, but I do understand that that comes with a price, and I think the way this is written here, this conditional commitment to go to lead goal is well-written, I will support it. My question I have is that if we were to get the ACE grant, when would we receive that?
We are scheduled to receive notification on November 21st. When the actual fund will come to us, we're not quite sure about that yet.
Okay, and can you, I think some of the answer was given earlier in the presentation, I should have asked for more clarification then, but which measures getting to gold contribute the most to the payback? I think I heard a lot of it was in the electrical and the heating system improvements. Is there anything else?
I'll take a stab at that. And Jay, please, please correct me if I mistake. The three areas that the district will realize the best payback are the areas of the electrical, the water savings from the toilet fixtures.
Water.
And sewer, those are the three areas.
Does anyone else wish to comment or question? Mr. Nichols?
I will be supporting this also, but only with a condition that if we don't get the grant, that those will move forward.
And seeing that, also the comments about the recognition for the lead designation for the building project.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crossley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dero?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Yusavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Seven?
Yes.
Eight zero.